Michelle, are we okay? So despite what the clock in the back says, which says we should be going home by now, we're gonna go with the real time. So, yes. So with that, I would like to call to order the Wednesday, August 15th, 2018, meeting of the Reno City Planning Commission. We will start with the Pledge of Legions led by Commissioner Hawkins.
(Pledge of Legions) To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, can we have roll call, please?
Britton Griffith.
Present.
Peter Gower.
Here.
Ed Hawkins.
Here.
John Marshall.
Here.
Paul Levis.
Here.
Kevin Wysocki.
Here.
Mark Johnson.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. Moving on to our next item, public comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. I do have one request-to-speak form under this item. And for any of you who are looking at any of the other items, please see Michelle to fill out one of these forms. So we'll start with Tammy Holstill.
Okay. Tammy Holstill, Lemon Valley, Swan Lake Recovery Committee, for the record. Yes, I'm still here and the water's still there. Today, I'm gonna speak about something that I'd spoke about before, but was asked to do it again, so I am. This is a photo of a truck, which is hard to see on there, that is pulling rock from -- it's by Lemon Drive. Oh, sorry. Anyway, it's by Lemon Drive. It's between the Mormon Church and the Silver State Dog -- Thank you. -- Dog Kennel. There was a pile of rocks that were moved illegally. Then they were told not to move the rock or not to do anything else until they went for the Board of Adjustment. This picture came up at the Board of Adjustment. This rock had been moved. The owner of that property also owns Lemon Lakes at Sky Vista Boulevard. And he stated, for the record, that he was moving those rocks, which are these rocks right here. He was moving those rocks to that location so that he could make a water feature. Well, by Washoe County code, that would make it a commercial business, moving it from one location to another. So my thing is, this is over on that city property, and there are two different locations of rock. This one's actually on the property. This one is in the ditch, just off of the -- in the culvert, just off the property. So my words to you is, your code enforcement, your -- whatever you guys need to do, you need to be checking to make sure that he's got -- has paid for this rock or has some kind of ownership for the rock, and it's not the rock from the Washoe County spot. We have rogue developers doing what they want when they want, and it needs to stop. And the only way it's gonna stop is if everybody starts making them accountable to do things right. This development has had other issues with stormwater runoff, where they flooded Sky Vista, and it's something that you guys need to look at. We have enough issues in our valley besides destroying our valley between, you know, water, muddy water running across the street and going into Swan Lake, or rocks being moved when they shouldn't have been moved because it was part of a creek to begin with. So please check into that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to make a public comment under this item? Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to item four on the agenda, which is approval of minutes. We will start with the minutes from the Reno Planning Commission's regular July 11th meeting. Looking for a motion to approve.
Commissioner Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve. Mr. Gower.
Commissioner Wysocki, second.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
I abstain. Commissioner Marshall.
Thank you. And next, looking at the minutes from the July 19th City Planning Commission meeting.
Chairman, Commissioner Griffith, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Mr. Gower, I'll second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Commissioner Levis, I'll abstain.
Thank you very much. Okay, moving on to item five, City Council Liaison Reports. Do not see Councilwoman Breckus. Have we received any updates? No, that's later. This is whether you tell me if Commissioner Breckus has given you any information for us.
She has mine.
Okay, then we will move on to public hearings. Moving on to item 6.1, which is case number LDC 18-00101, The Bridge Church Edition. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Dan Carn. I'm the architect for The Bridge Church. And with me this evening is Pastor Bill West, available for any questions that you might I have a fairly straightforward project for you this evening. What we're dealing with is a 1958 building with 1958 bathrooms and 1958 rooms and flow within the building. And the issues that we're attempting to address and correct are, number one, the bathrooms. So we will be providing ADA bathrooms to facilitate the building. And in many of the churches around town and around the country, there is a large social hall, which is the entry area to the building versus the Little Northex from 1958. So the brown area in the middle that says new addition is a large social hall, which is where the entry hall, basically, where the people will enter the building, and the wing up to the top are the bathrooms. Adding landscaping across the front of Foster Drive there that you see in the dark green. And that's basically it. Happy to answer any questions, and we certainly agree with the planning report and all their conditions.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll get a presentation from staff and let you know if we have any questions.
Hey, good evening. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner. Just to provide a little bit of context, this is a special use permit request for 3,000-square-foot expansion to a church or house of worship in the MF14 zone. The site is located near the intersection of Hunter Lake and Foster Drive, across from Reno High School and the Boys and Girls Club. Mr. Carn did a decent overview of the request. It is a pretty benign addition. It will not add any new seating capacity or traffic impacts. The proposal will enhance ADA accessibility, both internally and externally, enhance some existing nonconforming site work situations, add landscaping to the front of the building, and notably, a five-foot landscaped parking lot buffer strip along Foster Drive, and enclose an existing nonconforming dumpster on the east side of the property. The project was presented to the Ward 1 Neighborhood Advisory Board. No questions or comments were received from the board or from the general public on this request. Staff can make the applicable findings, and we are available for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, Nathan. This is a public hearing. Michelle, do we have any request-to-speak forms on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a statement on this? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the commission for any questions for staff or the applicant.
Did you want to do disclosures?
Oh, I suppose I could do that. Sorry, it's been two weeks and a long day. We'll do disclosures. I'll start with Commissioner Wysocki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site.
Mr. Hawkins, as did I.
Mr. Gower, as did I.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Griffith, no disclosures.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Okay. Now we'll move on to questions. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Question for the applicant.
Yes, sir.
When you said this wouldn't affect the flow of anything, I know you guys have been gracious enough to allow the Boys and Girls Club parking and using the facilities there. Is that still gonna go on like that?
Yes, we have a mutual agreement with them to share the parking between the two facilities.
Thank you very much.
So that's an ongoing agreement.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Mr. Marshall?
I'm ready to make a motion.
If there's no other questions, I'm ready to hear it.
In the matter of LDC 18-00101, based upon the compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions in the staff report.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second?
Commissioner Griffith, I'll second.
Okay, have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Good luck with your project.
Commissioner, can I just reflect upon the fact I voted yes on something?
So noted, so noted. Okay. Now that Commissioner Marshall's on a roll, we'll move on to item 6.2, case number LDC 18-00105, Home Depot Truck Rental Condition Amendment. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant.
Hello, my name -- Okay. My name is Janee Momar, and we are SDCs for Home Depot. And this project is to correct a previous conditions of approval for Penske trucks at the existing Home Depot site. Penske trucks were already approved to be permitted for rental at the Home Depot store. However, in error, it was not mentioned for the trucks to be allowed to be parked overnight. So we are applying to revise the conditions of approval to allow the Penske trucks to be parked onsite overnight in designated stalls. And we have been working with planning staff over the last few weeks, and we have reviewed the staff report, and we are in support of the conditions of approval.
Okay.
Any questions?
We'll get a presentation from staff and let you know.
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. Before you this evening is a request to amend conditions of approval that were before the Planning Commission in December of 2016. The subject site is off of Summit Ridge to the west of McCarran Boulevard. And the applicant representative outlined the request that's before you this evening. Really, at the time that the entitlement came forward, previously, the applicant had identified at that time that they intended to store trucks at an off-site location and deliver them for customers as they were reserved. And the business model has been modified since then. They would like to retain the trucks at the site where identified on the approved site plan. And the applicant had identified that the requested condition amendments included condition numbers four through six. In your staff report, you'll also find that staff has recommended a modification to condition number seven to more specifically outline a date range in which the applicant would need to report back to staff that update that the Planning Commission had requested to just acknowledge that the site was in conformance with the approved SUP. The timeframe that has been identified in condition seven that's before you this evening is really to coincide with the spring to summer season, because that's usually the time that activity on the site is most active. So staff is recommending approval of the request. The site area that is proposed for the Penske truck storage has not been modified since the previous approval, and I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Heather. So in order to do this correctly, before I go to public comment, I'll bring it back for disclosures and start with Commissioner Levis.
Commissioner Levis, I visited the site.
Commissioner Marshall, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Griffith, I'm familiar with the site.
Commissioner Johnson, I previously visited the site.
Mr. Gower, no disclosures.
Commissioner Hawkins, I visited all the time.
Commissioner Wysocki, I visited the site.
Okay, thank you. Michelle, do we have any request to speak on this item?
No, we do not.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to make a statement on this? Seeing none, we will close public comment and bring it back to the commission for questions. Commissioner Wysocki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Heather, if you would, please. Can you tell me why, with the residential adjacency that we do and the potential for mis-parking of vehicles, that the conditions aren't written for return or rentals when Home Depot, when staff is available?
In this case, I don't think that there's that much activity with regard to dropping vehicles off at night. We did discuss with the applicant their operations plan and how that may be laid out. And so one of the things that we really identified that could potentially have an impact to the adjacent residences to the south of that parking area are headlight glare. And so as a part of their operations plan, they did incorporate a circulation plan that the manager and customers would have as a disclosure, that when they park vehicles on the site, that they face the headlights north toward the freeway. So really, that was the one impact that we could see potentially would -- there would be on those adjacent residents. And so we felt that the conditions in the operations plan would address that.
So you think the operations plan is sufficient versus having staff there to make sure it doesn't take place? That's question one. And the second question is, what about when this operation, the existing tenant, whatever, leaves and the condition stays with the property, and who knows who comes in behind it?
So Home Depot is the operator for the Penske truck rentals, and they are responsible for those operations. And so the operations plan that was provided with your staff report exhibits is actually the Home Depot operations plan, and that would pass on to whatever operator would be in place in the future.
Okay, thank you. No more questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins.
Heather, can you explain to me how we got to this place in the first place, since it's been over sixteen, what, eighteen months since we originally approved this? Why are we just now seeing this?
The applicant came in for a business license application to modify the operations to include the overnight rental or the overnight parking of the rental trucks. And so that prompted staff to look into this a bit further, and the applicant was notified at that time the conditions that are currently on the project. And so they did go ahead and process that request to amend those conditions based on our findings.
And doesn't Home Depot have a strict adherence to delivery trucks from nine to two, I believe? Is that what I read?
I can turn that question over to the applicant to answer, if you would like.
As far as delivery of the rental trucks?
Normal deliveries, I believe I read nine to two.
Nine to two.
And no big rigs after four or five?
On our operations plan. So based on the municipal code we have for operations, the deliveries can only be between eight and 6:00 p.m. If there's certain conditions to the Home Depot store next to a residential area, that might be the case. But we have eight to six p.m. But we can revise the operations plan to be nine to two, I believe you said.
See, if we were to allow something from eight to six, we wouldn't get headlight glare except in the wintertime, when the sun sets, of course, around four o'clock. That's not bad at all. That way, we don't have glare into the residential area, right to the southwest.
Okay. So which -- what were the delivery hours that you were requesting?
From what I read in the staff report, there's a delivery of -- a delivery time period of nine in the morning to two in the afternoon.
Okay, yes, we can update the operations plan to be nine to two.
Thank you.
Wait a minute. Don't leave yet. Commissioner Wysocki, you want to restrict your rental business times from 9:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m.?
No, that is not for the Penske trucks. That is for delivery of the Home Depot supplies. They're normal operations for --
Okay, then I'm gonna ask Commissioner Hawkins to clarify, because I understood you just to be asking, we're dealing with not normal deliveries, but rental trucks, so...
Yeah, no, that question was strictly for -- what I was gonna do is talk about both instances. One, you have deliveries of -- from nine in the morning to two in the afternoon. But there's really no restrictions, other than they dumped the vehicle there in the parking lot with headlights facing north. So is that time period, any time in the night where they bring that vehicle back? Or is there restrictions from you guys on...
Yes, the Penske trucks can be delivered, we have, for 24 hours, and renters would get a brochure or information on where to park the trucks and that the headlights have to be faced towards the freeway, and there's a key drop-off box. So they can return the Penske rental trucks 24 hours. And then I believe we were referring to delivery trucks for Home Depot material to
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Additional questions? Mr. Marshall?
Heather, can I ask your question, please? The condition in number four states that the operator will provide instructions to the customer, not that the actual trucks be parked in a particular way. And what I'm concerned about is if the, you know, if there's a written instruction in the, you know, fine print of the rental documents that you get. I know I just toss that into the glove compartment or, you know, I'm not gonna be reading it. And it doesn't provide, you know, the enforcement is to provide the instructions, not to have the trucks parked in a certain orientation with this condition. So I'm wondering if we could make this condition, not only that they provide instruction, but also the trucks be parked that way. So if, in fact, it turns out that people are ignoring the instructions, that there can be some sort of -- and it is affecting the residents, they have some sort of recourse that actually would address the orientation of the parking of the trucks, rather than the provision of the information on how to park the trucks.
Sure.
You think we can...
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record. I see what you're saying, that you're thinking that maybe the condition could be modified in a way to direct customers to specifically park with the headlights facing north. And as far as condition four goes, I heard some concerns over here. And so if the Planning Commission does have some concerns with the drop-off of vehicles when Home Depot is closed, the Planning Commission is able to request or include in your motion a modification to that condition number four to include that.
Thank you.
Discussion items. Mr. Wysocki.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with discussion. With condition number four, I would propose that we think about or discuss or change the condition so that pickup and drop-off times are during business hours only, stated for the business at the time, and that over -- that 24-hour parking, though, is allowed, so they don't have to remove the vehicles at night. But that way, whether somebody is different than Commissioner Marshall and myself, where we throw documents into the glove box until we return the rental vehicle, and somebody were to read it, they might get the information, but the majority of us don't. And I think that would eliminate the problems. But I have no problem with the 24-hour parking. It's just pickup and return that I do. And I'm having a hard time making a finding because of that.
Thank you. Commissioner Hawkins.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Heather, we have a number of 10 trucks that are supposed to be the max parked over there at Home Depot. At any given time in the last three months I've been over there, and they've had 11, 12 trucks there. How are we gonna ensure that they don't go over there 10? Do we gotta call code enforcement and say, hey, you go check on Home Depot on Summit, will you? Maybe they've got 11 trucks. We've already gone over the limit to begin with, okay? And it really bothers me that we're here making an amendment to something that shouldn't be. So my curiosity is how we're gonna stop, or how Penske's gonna work this out to where they only have 10 trucks maximum there, not five on the road that comes in and 10 that's already there. How are we gonna fix that problem so we don't have code enforcement running their fanny off?
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner, for the record, again. To address your question, both while staff was doing research and preparing the staff report for this evening, and also, more recently, staff did check in with code enforcement to see if there were any customer calls for complaint on the site, and we haven't received any. So at this time, I would say that we aren't aware of an issue with it being out of conformance with the approved special use permit. We do have code enforcement staff here this evening to assist you in answering the question as far as follow-through after approval.
Mr. Chair, I'd be -- I'd like to hear Commissioner Wysocki's idea on hours.
I guess I'm not quite sure where your question is going there.
Hours of operation.
Okay.
What I'm suggesting is, the business that is in the building at the time, because this condition will roll over should Home Depot move, sell, whatever the case may be, that the posted hours on the door are the business hours of operation. And so that would be the available hours for pickup and delivery of rental units, although rental units could remain on the property, parked appropriately in the appropriate location, Hope that clears it up.
Okay. Commissioner Gower.
Mr. Chairman, I -- if I could respond to Commissioner Wysocki. I mean, thinking about it from a code enforcement perspective, how would you enforce that? If there's no gate or anything on this lot, how would you enforce someone bringing the truck back at midnight as opposed to when the store closes at 11:00 o'clock?
The same way you're gonna enclose -- that code enforcement is going to enforce no headlights in the window, that they're gonna get a call on the next morning after somebody's had headlights in their apartment or house, and then they're not there -- that doesn't happen again for another three or four months. It's a next to impossible, but I think this would help alleviate a lot of it if you have people returning vehicles when staff is onsite to accept the vehicle back into their -- the business's possession. Does that make sense?
So I think that's the key, then, Commissioner Wysocki, is that instead of having a dropbox, when someone can come back whenever, if they wanna get their rental return fees, then they have to get their keys back, trade them in to staff.
Whatever, but staff would be there to accept that vehicle back and make sure it's, you know, whatever they have to do to ensure that they take it back in a reasonable condition and that it's parked in the appropriate place in the appropriate direction. I'm trying to minimize exactly what your concern is, Commissioner Gower, of how can it be enforced, you know, down the road? And that was just my suggestion. I'm willing to listen to other modifications. It was just the beginning of a modification to the condition.
Okay, thank you. Additional discussion?
Commissioner Griffith, for the record, I will echo that for the residential adjacency, that the impact can be best navigated and controlled if somebody's onsite, and that would be staff. And I also agree with the fact that if a new owner or operator is in that place, that it's important that the business hours would match. So I agree.
So I think that, I guess the question to me, there's kind of two questions that I heard. One is the operation hours, and then Commissioner Hawkins also brought up a comment about the number of trucks. I'm noticing that in the initial requirement, there was not a limit on the number of trucks. There was a limit on the number of parking spaces. So the limit of 10 trucks has been added as a part of this. I believe that was to minimize the number of vehicles that were parked there overnight. But the way that I'm reading this, that is a change. So up to this point, there has been no restriction on the number of vehicles that can be parked there, just the number of parking spaces and the size of the shed. So... So I guess if we're looking at the modifications in the comments here with respect to hours of operation and drop off time, we're sort of, by the way this is written, also contributing to your comment about the number of vehicles and actually limiting that now across the board. So I can agree with the discussion that's going on here based on the findings that we have to make. I will be curious as to the specific language that we're looking at, if it's based on hours of operation for the store itself, the adjacent operator, or some terminology that works for Heather if she needs to do that. But based on that, I'd be looking for a motion that incorporates that into the discussion for the rest of the commission to hear. So whoever wants to tackle that, I'm open to it, because it can't be me. Commissioner Wieski?
Mr. Chairman, if you give me just a second to write this out the way my thought process was, I'll be glad to make a motion if you give me a couple minutes, please.
I can give you a couple minutes. Maybe perhaps, Heather, if you've got any ideas or suggestions from what you've heard in terms of some language that might be appropriate for this?
Heather Manzo, Assistant Planner. Unless Commissioner Wieski has additional input, staff, it appears very clear from the planning commission's input tonight that condition four needs to be modified to specifically limit vehicle drop off or pickup to the hours of operation for the Home Depot to ensure that there is staff available to receive and distribute keys for those. So staff feels comfortable modifying that condition as directed this evening.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gower, I would just add that I don't think we need to lose the language either about the orientation of the trucks as their part. So if Commissioner Wieski has revised language, he might consider that.
I feel like the Jeopardy music should be playing, but maybe that's just me.
I'm prepared to make a motion that doesn't have specific language unless, Kevin, you've, excuse me, Commissioner Wieski, unless you've penned it out.
Commissioner Marshall, I think I've got something. I'll throw it out, and if you would like to edit it, jump in, please. I would love that. So the modifications in red on condition number four, starting with the customer brochure at a minimum, shall state that rental operation of the, that the rental operation, comma, including the return of rental vehicles, shall only take place during the stated business hours, is item number one. Number two, provide instruction to the customer that trucks are to be returned between 6:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. The truck shall be parked with the front of the vehicle facing north towards I-80. And I believe that covers it. But I will take edits from anybody on this commission who chooses.
So I would, I guess, ask if you would throw the motion portion into that as well?
I will, is if that, if that condition sounds right to people. If we want to edit it, then I'll.
Understood. Commissioner Marshall?
Commissioner Wieski, my only issue there is that, again, it's focused on the instructions given to the renter, rather than a specific condition saying, truck shall only be returned between these hours, or the hours of operation of the Home Depot, which is, which is different. I think we need to say not that it's, I mean, we can ask, we can tell them to include it within the brochure, but what's critical is they can't accept returns. They've got to get rid of the drop box, they got to do all that stuff and basically say...
So do you think it's appropriate to have, and a bullet point number three in there then, that say, that specifically states, no rental vehicles shall be returned between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m.? Or the stated business hours?
Yes.
Okay. So to that modified condition number three, we will have bullet point number three that states, no rental vehicles shall be returned between 9:00 p.m. and 6:00 a.m., unless the stated business hours are different. And that would, should cover it, including in the future. With that revised condition, commissioners, if we're all in agreement, Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion in the case of LDC 18-00105, Home Depot Truck Rental Condition Amendment, based upon compliance with the applicable findings. I move to approve the amendment to the conditions of approval associated with special use permit, LDC 16-00062, Home Depot Truck Rental, as written below, including my modifications or our modifications to condition number four as previously read.
Seconded. Commissioner Marshall?
Thank you. I have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, motion carries. Good luck with your project. Moving on to item 6.3, case number LDC 18-00100, Northern Nevada Medical Center, McCarran, Northwest Fed. We'll start with a presentation from the applicant. Oh, I'm sorry, I have a present, a comment from Commissioner Griffith first.
Commissioner Griffith, due to my capacity at Reno Engineering Corporation, we have a financial relationship with Northern Nevada Medical Center as they are one of our clients. And so I'll be recusing myself from this item.
Thank you, Commissioner Griffith. Now we'll move on to a presentation from the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Alan Olive, CEO for Northern Nevada Medical Center. And so I appreciate the time that we can present this. What F-FED stands for is Freestanding Emergency Department. So today we wanted to address some of the conditions in regards to the staff report, but also share some information about what a freestanding emergency department is, since that is the first in this community. So I have control on this, is that correct? Thank you. Whoops.
The arrow button's on the keyboard.
Or is it just the arrow on the key? Okay, thanks. Let me get at it. There we go. Thank you. Remember, I'm a CEO, not somebody who's knowledgeable about operating things, so. So freestanding emergency department is really what it says. It's an emergency department that is separate, not on the same campus as a hospital. It's, as we describe it, it's probably comparable in size to an urgent care as far as that is concerned. It treats many common medical conditions and emergency conditions. It's not designed to have helicopters fly in, it's not designed to address critical conditions, to have REMZA transport heart attack victims, et cetera. But it's, it's really addressed to address lower level emergency conditions, separate from what main emergency rooms do at hospitals. So with that, why are we doing this? One is, in my first slide, I actually talked about our purpose statement, or our why statement, which is to honor life's journey. And one of the ways we can honor people's journey through life is to provide access to care. And so that's one of the key reasons why we're doing this. Obviously, population growth continues to grow. If anybody in this room has ever been to an ER, I know many times people can wait one, two, three, four, or more hours. And so this ER is designed to address a lot of the access and time issues. And really, through the experience of these freestanding or community ERs across the country, people utilize them actually very correctly, as well as REMZA has a specific protocol in which they will or will not deliver patients to these centers. And it's also here to address community choice, so that people have choice to go where they choose to go, whether it be downtown or some other place or near their community. This location is right in northwest Reno. It's off Mayan and McCarran. It will be a 24/7 operations. Will have advanced imaging services, as well as board certified ER physicians, as well as trained staff from nursing, as well as imaging, as well as laboratory. And it is a one-story building. You can see it here to the right, bottom right. It will have landscaping to improve the site. Right now, most people note that as the site with the mud puddle. So it'll definitely improve the site and provide a needed service to the community. Wanted to emphasize, this is not a trauma facility. Renown does a great job in providing trauma services for our community. This is not designed to service those individuals, it's designed to carry for, or care for those who require less emergent needs. Now, I stated with honoring life's journey, that's our why statement, and our how we do that is through quality care, as well as the access to care. In addition, as I've stated before, that's that convenience that is unparalleled, that you cannot receive anywhere else. The costs are similar too, although Medicare has shared that they're reducing reimbursement for facilities like this, so that could also be a benefit. And satisfaction is very high when people access an emergency room with a needed service and they're able to access care quickly, as well as be discharged home. Now with these ERs, as we talk about ERs, there's sometimes concern about ERs, because you think of ambulances and noise and lights and sirens, and many, many people. These are not that. Ninety-five percent of the people who visit these ERs are discharged home. We will not have overnight stays, so that's a definitely significant difference as well. The FED or the community ER, it is that unique model, as we shared before. We already addressed some of the benefits of access and so forth. One of the things we're here tonight is to educate, as well as we've committed to the Neighborhood Advisory Board, as well as we'll commit to you, is that we will be educating well for, all the way until this is opened, as well as after, to ensure that is accessed appropriately. REMZA is already set up with their protocols that they will not transport, with lights and sirens requiring that level of care. And they, we do have representation from REMZA here in case there's any questions that you may have their protocols. Again, it's designed to reduce the wait times that people experience in the ERs. I would say this also addresses that need in that corridor. There's a lot of 24/7 use in that corridor with a lot of businesses open. We would be one of them. We've named a number of those in this presentation. And we believe it also bring additional security to that corridor as well. So this is the site, again, a little bit more close up site. We made a very conscious and specific decision in this design. You can see that we've budded up to the drainage way. Even though we have the property that overlays into the drainage way, we will not be accessing that. We, we've all been there. It's a steep site, and so we're going up to the edge of that, providing some great landscaping that will provide a beautification of that site. And so we wanted to make sure it's a beautiful site, not only for our patients and our staff, but also for our neighbors. Now, this, this site is addressing one of the items as far as traffic. And so we can see that some of the access points from the south on the first driveway, as well as the top on Mayan, also where McCarran, there's that middle site, that could also be an access point as well that's not marked, but we do have a map that we could show on that. Now, we did a traffic study based on some recommendations and found out that indeed we were well under the required threshold, were less than 20%. It's actually 16%. And so that volume of traffic for that impact study. And so those access points are there. Now, one of the conditions was condition 11, which to address signage. Now, signage, just so we're understanding, hospitals are not required to put hospital signage on freeways. We do it because it helps people know where to go. And so there was a condition 11 that requires a signage plan to go throughout these driveways and on the site. And we're concerned that the CCNRs may, we may have some challenge with that of having signs. We'd be the only entity on that property that would have signs directing people to that site. So we're concerned that we may not be able to meet that. And so basically, what we're requesting is amended condition due to the potential CCRN issues to allow a best effort, to see what we can do to address that, and then ultimately initiate administrative relief if signage is unavailable. We do have our traffic engineer here to show the site plan, because it's very visible actually from multiple sites. It is a one-story building, but we have a elevated ER sign. I don't know if we want to show that at this time? Yes? No? Later?
You can roll on with your presentation. It's all up to you.
Okay. Well, we'll move forward and... So next is addressing one of the questions that was raised, is the protocol for lights and sirens. I've worked in hospital industry for many, many years. I was actually born at St. Mary's. I built a lot of Renown, and now I'm at Northern Nevada. I've been at Northern Nevada for, going on six years. My office actually faces, a house is right across the street from us. We've had zero complaints, as well as I have never seen nor heard of a siren or lights coming up Prater Way to our hospital. And so that's, that's the level of protocol that REMZA follows for that service. Hospitals actually have a higher level of acuity or service than this freestanding emergency room would have. And therefore, if I've had zero complaints, and I even as a CEO, I'm concerned about my neighbors, I was born and raised here, this would have basically zero chance of having those lights and sirens. We've also conducted a, that traffic study, as well as an acoustic study that was required. And the acoustic study found that the displacement of the freestanding emergency department would actually not have any additional noise than what is currently accessed on McCarran. Today, McCarran fire ambulance and police use that corridor to address emergency situations every day. And since REMZA, based on their studies, show that they only use 4% of lights and sirens on their transports, and that really is applicable to Level 1 and 2, which are the most critical, none of the Level 1 and 2s will ever come to this emergency department. By design, REMZA gets people to the right location for the right reason. And in fact, REMZA will not transport any patient to any hospital. They base it on the best needs for that patient. For example, any hospital that does not have a cath lab will not receive patients that they can see that are having some cardiac changes on EKGs, for example. So those are an example. Nor would they ever transport anything like that to our facility. So I think it's important to note that by design, they will not transport with lights and sirens to this facility. As well as a reminder that 95% of people choose this correctly, only 5% require transport out, and that's almost 100% based on people choosing to come to this facility and then the emergency room physicians identifying a condition that may require admission. So the acoustic study also identified that the parking lot noise would be, again, below what are the required standards, as well as the fire department, again, as we've said, they already operate in this corridor, and they've identified that it would not increase noise. In fact, I would be, go so far to say, is we would be one of the quietest neighbors and least visited neighbors in that community with only 16% threshold. I think Jack in the Box will see a lot more visitors than we would. So it's not just about a building and about the ER, but we've come with quality and service and excellence. So our history, and this is just awards that we've received at Northern Nevada Medical Center just this year. For you, it means that we provide the highest level of service, that we focus on quality and patient experience, and our staff satisfaction is job number one. So these awards go with stroke awards from a national, from the American Heart Association and Stroke Association, as well as Action Registry Award that has to do with cardiac care. The Joint Commission is the regulatory body that regulates the, a lot of the quality in our hospitals across the United States. We received... We received a gold seal approval as well as the advanced certification, which is the highest certification. And then Northern Nevada Medical Center has also received the only premier excellence and safety award of any hospital in the state as well as probably, I think it's only one of two in the West Coast and one of 27 across the United States. So it shows that we mean business about providing safety and security for our patients. And then Leapfrog doesn't sound like a regulatory body, but it's a quasi-regulatory body that measures quality for hospitals. And we received the top grade, A grade for quality and safety. So it's back to honoring life's journey and we wanted to share this and educate you as a commission as well as the audience to ensure that they're aware that we do listen, we do understand. But we also wanted to ensure that the noise, we can, with the noise study as well as the actual way this operates, really as, does not pose a concern as well as lights and sirens because of the protocols that REMZA follows as well as the traffic studies been showed that we will be well below the threshold. So we do want to honor life's journey and provide this another level of access and care for our community. And we believe that that would be a great location for the community. We've received and numerous phone calls through our letters. We sent out over 300 letters to the community and we received numerous phone calls and huge support for it as well as written comments and support. We did read the comments where they were concerned about mainly lights and sirens in the traffic. So that is my presentation and I'll stop for questions.
Okay, thank you. We'll get a presentation from staff and then call you back with any questions.
Thank you.
Nathan, welcome back.
Thank you very much. For the record, Nathan Gilbert, Associate Planner, pleased to be here. Staff generally concurs with the applicant's presentation. The freestanding emergency room concept is new to Northern Nevada. However, there are numerous facilities similar operating in Clark County. Staff did reach out to nursing staff from three competing freestanding emergency rooms in Clark County to kind of get a feel for the ambulance counts and operational criteria. And they generally concur that they see about one to two, sometimes less. The priority one calls, the ambulance staff generally routes to a trauma center although they, so... That was our main concern in finding consistency in our outreach to Clark County facilities would support what the applicant is presenting. The request for freestanding emergency room was qualified as a hospital use, which is allowed by right in the arterial commercial zone. The request requires a special use permit due to the 24-hour nature and residential adjacency. Initially, staff's concerns were consistent with what we heard from the Ward 5 NAB. We did request that the applicant hold a neighborhood meeting. They sent out notices beyond the 750 radius that we typically ask for advising residents of the Ward 5 NAB and gave a similar presentation to what you heard today. The NAB comments and comments received, written comments received from the public were related to potential noise impacts from ambulance service and onsite circulation requests with specific concerns with the functionality of the Canyon Center complex. I think Mr. Olive did a fine job identifying the mitigations for noise impacts. We did request a comprehensive sound study, which was included in your staff report. I think the gist of it is that majority of lights and siren calls from ambulance service are not going to be coming here. And that North McCarran Boulevard is already a major arterial road. And the ambulance services, the one to two ambulance services that may be anticipated on the site as a negligible impact to what is already here. As far as site circulation, I would point out that the sign condition came from the project traffic engineer. Staff requested an enhanced analysis of the site circulation. We had concerns with it. Upon review of Mr. Chisholm's report and research on national standards and ITE, staff could support the site circulation, access to the facility. However, we do believe that condition 11 is important and our recommendation of approval is contingent upon that maintaining on the site. And I do have some street view graphics. You can see what it would be like. It would be very difficult if you weren't intimately familiar with the exact location to find it, particularly if you're in an emergency situation. So to reiterate, staff's recommendation of approval would be contingent upon maintaining condition 11. We are available for any questions at the appropriate time.
Thank you, Nathan. Before I open this up to public comment, I will bring it back to the Commission for disclosures, starting with Commissioner Wieski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Mr. Hawkins, as did I.
Commissioner Gower, as did I.
Commissioner Johnson, as did I.
Commissioner Marshall, no disclosures.
Commissioner Oliva, I visited the site and spoke with the applicant's representative.
Okay, thank you. At this point, I will open it up for public comment. I do have a couple of request-to-speak forms here. And if you would like to make a comment on this item, please see Michelle to fill one of these out if you haven't already. And I will start with Dale Bratcher.
Hello and thank you. I'm Dale Bratcher of 3430 Heights Drive. As in the presentation before, sorry, I forgot my smartphone. But we are literally at the top of the canyon in the cul-de-sac, right behind the proposed site. If you look at a topographical map, it is literally a natural amphitheater. We can hear cars closing their doors down in those parking lots. We hear the discount tire ratchets going all day long already. If there's even one REMZA vehicle or any ambulance or siren or anything, that's literally just, it amplifies and comes right up over our street. It's very, very loud already. Yes, you know, McCarran is a natural corridor, but to put an ER there, there's so much other space, there's so much other land available to do something like this. To put it right in the bottom of a natural amphitheater just doesn't make too much sense. Sure, I'd love to have a place a block away from me where I can go to ER if I need it. But noise-wise, I've lived there for, since 2000. And noise-wise, it's getting louder and louder every day. And to put an ER there just doesn't make any sense. There has to be much more viable sites out there. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next, I have Davine Kaplan.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for this opportunity to let us speak. My name's Davine Kaplan. I'm also a resident on Heights Drive. And I would like to reiterate what Mr. Bratcher had stated. I don't, didn't really get a chance to look at the staff report or understand how the acoustic study was conducted. But sound travels immensely from that westerly wind, prevailing winds. Everything carries, like Dale said, we can hear the ratchets for the big O. I can smell the chicken cooking at the boil loco. So with the prevailing winds, our houses are just bombarded all the time with noise. As it is right now, I can't even sleep with my bedroom window open anymore on McCarran. I do appreciate them trying to, you know, reassure us that there's, might only be one or two ambulances a day, which could be negligible. I don't know for sure. But as the city grows and the needs of people are higher in this area, if the noise does get louder, what is the recourse that citizens actually have? So that's my concern and I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Shelby Hunt.
Good evening. Shelby Hunt, Director of Emergency Services at Northern Nevada Medical Center. And I'm actually speaking on two perspectives. One, as the Director of the Emergency Department and past Director at St. Mary's Emergency Department. I am in favor of this. With the rapid growth of our community in both the Sparks and Reno area, the emergency department and urgent cares are struggling with capacity issues at times not meeting our goals of throughput, which is arrival to disposition, getting the patients back out to their busy lives. And we are just limited on resources. So adding another emergency department would be incredibly a huge service to our community. From the public entity perspective, I am a mother of two children and actually used to live in the northwest area, right down the street from where this site is being considered and would have loved to have had this in my community. I don't, I mean, we used to live right past Walmart and I don't see the ambulance noise being an issue. Again, you're talking one to two ambulances maybe a day. By far, you'll hear the ratchets more than you would ever hear ambulance, ambulances. But my biggest issue is we just need more resources in this community to take care of patients and would just like you to consider that.
Okay, thank you. I have no more request-to-speak forms up here. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to make a statement on this item? Seeing nobody rushing the podium, I will close public comment and I will bring it back to the Commission for questions. Who would like to start us off?
Mr. Marshall?
Nathan? Looking at the orientation of the building. Notice that the ambulance drop-off is on the... Sorry, that's the north side of the building. Facing northeast. Would that, would a reorientation of the building so the ambulance drop-off is on the west side address any of these noise issues? So that the proposed building would buffer some of the neighbors?
With the noise issue, primarily we've heard concern with ambulance, the sirens from the ambulance? Are you referring to like door shutting and?
No, sirens.
Sirens. You've heard that REMZA's protocol would be even if they were to route here, which would be uncommon given the service, the limited services here, that they would turn them off prior to entering the Canyon Center.
Well, what they said was they would turn off on neighborhoods. Is this a neighborhood?
They've said in conversations with us, with REMZA staff and at the, at the NAB, we do have REMZA personnel here that could speak on the protocol.
So there'd be no lights or?
Their protocol would be no lights as entering the center, but you may want to direct that directly to the REMZA personnel.
Is there any other, I know this is a stupid question, but are there any other ambulance services that would be providing here besides REMZA?
To my understanding, there would not be.
Okay. So in other words, you don't think it's necessary? Not whether they could reorient?
If your concern is related to the siren noise, then no, I don't believe that would be warranted.
Okay, thank you. The applicant, please? I think you, thank you for your presentation, by the way. It's very informative. I've been lectured by my emergency department sister, not to call it an ER, but the ED.
You can call it either way.
I don't understand why you can put up ER instead of ED. I don't, you know, you're looking at, you know, one to two deliveries a day max. You look, you say it's 2% to 5% of the volume. You estimate 3.15%. Why in this site adjacent to residential property, I mean, why do you even need it if it's that low of a use?
Well, as I stated in the presentation and as well as in the information, most of the people who utilize this drive their own cars. REMZA will deliver one to two. And this is based off of not just our estimates, but off of actual information. We have Doug Matney, who represents our company as well. He's responsible for the, these centers all across the country. And so the data shows that it's a very low ambulance traffic to these sites. So that's one. And two, we want to reemphasize that, and two, the people that live in the northwest community, actually, I'm going to turn this way because I think you're over here.
Actually, I'm sorry, I'm going to have to have you direct it to us as the question.
Okay, I'll just point to them.
Thank you.
That if indeed there were actually lights and sirens, I'd 100% agree with them. But since REMZA has these protocols on levels three, fours and fives, they will never deliver the ones and twos to us, which only for, again, 4% are transported. But those all go to hospital ERs. So hopefully that answers some of your questions.
You nicely maneuvered around it. But can you, can you help me understand what, what segment of normal ED patients would you be looking to take here? So I'm just trying to figure out, I mean, you're not obviously talking about severe trauma.
Correct.
So what is, I'm just interested in what is your, what's your target?
So we also have a physician in the audience. I don't know if that would be appropriate time to bring them up where I can articulate it.
No, you can just, I mean, it's like, is it leg, you break a leg, you normally go to ER. What patients are you looking at?
It would address medical conditions as well as other physical conditions. It could involve some broken bones and things like that, stitches, et cetera. But it wouldn't address things that would be required such as a surgical intervention that REMZA would be transporting there. REMZA would diagnose and do their triage in the field as they always do. I think the concern, what my understanding is, REMZA traffic lights and sirens. And again, I want to reemphasize that there will be no lights and sirens by REMZA due to their protocol as well as their triage out in the field.
So then you wouldn't mind if we imposed a condition that says no lights or sirens?
It's REMZA's, I'd say just based off REMZA's protocol, which again, they can clarify as well.
So you have no objection?
Yeah, I would like to ask REMZA to come up just to clarify, just to make sure, but that is their...
So if, if they clarify that that's their policy, you would have no objection to the?
I would have no objection.
Thank you.
Is that okay to have REMZA come up this time?
Make sure I'm prepared. Adam Heinz, Director of Clinical Communication, REMZA. So it would be our policy and our protocol that we would not transport patients emergent to this facility. Now, obviously, the noise on McCarran I cannot control. 80% of our calls in which we respond to daily utilize lights and sirens. I, go ahead.
Sorry, say it again, 80% of your?
911 calls every day. So we, we utilize an international academy of emergency dispatch protocol system when somebody calls 911 to triage whether we're going to respond, lights and sirens, to the scene 80% of the time. So 20%, we go non-emergent.
Right, so that's to the scene, not to the facility?
Correct. I was just, yeah, just being clear that we're not going to be able to obviously, you know, on McCarran, we will not be able to confer that we would not be able to do that. But to this facility, absolutely.
Absolutely.
Correct. Our protocol will be that we will not respond or utilize lights and sirens to transport patients to the facility.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's all I have.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Marshall. Additional questions? Mr. Gower?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Can we talk about condition number, is it 14 or 11? I forget. Whichever one talks about the wayfinding signs identified in the traffic report, 11. I have a question regarding that. Nathan, the applicant identified that there would be concerns with the CCNRs about including those. Mr. Chilson included them as a recommendation in his report. You obviously agreed with that. What, what's the issue?
Nathan Gilbert, for the record. If the Commission would like, I can show street image standards of what it's like to access the site from two primary points of access. From staff's concern and what the initial traffic analysis recommended was that, that wayfinding signage be provided on the site. It is somewhat circuitous. Staff brought that up as an initial concern from the very beginning on the appropriateness of it. And again, looking at national standards, best practices, the traffic engineer's recommendation, and also looking at similar internal circulation at the South Meadows, Renown Campus and Northern Nevada's primary facility, we were okay. and Northern Nevada's primary facility, we were okay with the circulation access to the site, but we do feel that it's pivotal of an emergency situation, appropriate wayfinding signage be provided so that, that customers aren't carousing through the, the facilities, running by restaurants, a grocery store. If you're going to be coming in there in an emergency situation, we want to be very clear that, that they're following the appropriate circulation route.
And I just want to clarify that my question was not disagreeing with staff's recommendation or what's in the traffic report. I want to understand why the applicant might have an issue with it, and I thought that you might know from a perspective of the CCNRs.
My understanding, speaking with the applicant's representative, was that they were concerned with possible conflicts with CCNR requirements, that other tenants in the facility may have a, a say in that, but I would defer that to, to the applicant or the representative.
Okay. So sure, I'll direct that question to the applicant. Representative?
Good evening, Lauren Chilson, Traffic Works. The, the concern that was raised and was one that actually I became aware of after we'd issue our traffic letter as well, is that the properties are within the center are under separate ownership, is my understanding, each parcel is. And so there's the concern that if those owners were not to grant approval for the signs, we could end up in a very sticky situation where we have a condition to place a sign and we, and we legally can't. That's the concern. And so the, the request for amended condition is one that just gives some latitude in that area, that if we cannot place a sign legally, that we can do something else or perhaps not place the sign. Again, the, the building has a rooftop sign that says ER, ED, it'll emergency. Mr. Olive's presentation showed that on the top of the building, so that will be pretty visible. The signs could be helpful. I, I don't know that they're absolutely pivotal. And so for that reason, we're asking for a little bit of flexibility in that condition in case we get in a spot where we're a little bit stuck and, and don't want to be in violation of the SEP, but, you know, over a somewhat minor issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can I jump in on that?
I think Commissioner Olivas beats you to the buzzer. I, also jumping in on that, I guess this for the applicant or the applicant's representative, one of you, you've been very thorough in your presentation and I appreciate that. And I assume that you've been very thorough in your due diligence. So specifically, what do the CCNRs say that would be a problem? And what did the owners' association tell you when you asked them about the sign?
Good evening, Commissioners John Krompotic, on behalf of the applicant. So we spoke with Rita Ricks, who's a, an attorney in town, represents Canyon Center. And here's what she said. Don't know that that kind of directional signage was contemplated in the CCNRs. And she specifically mentioned arrows on the pavement as an alternative. That was what we got from the shopping center attorney.
Okay, so I, I guess that's, they suggested an alternative. Did they say that this would be precluded?
They did not say. They were not.
They did not say. Did you, did you present this to them and say this is what the city's asking for? Is this, because I assume that the use, as part of the due diligence, the use was explored. So I'm just curious, this seems to be a kind of a, I don't know, before I bought the property or before I, I rented the property, whatever the case, if there's a condition, I would think that that would be something that I would be concerned about and follow up, just like the use. So, so I'm just curious, this doesn't seem like a major signage issue. So what's their position and, and?
That, that's what we discovered in their position. We didn't get into the depth of any CCNR analysis as it relates to the condition. The applicant and, you know, the gentleman that I, that I answered to, they had a concern about simply, they've been all consistent in saying, we will accept the signed condition. We think that directional signage might help them, but they want to have the legal ability to go ahead and perfect the condition. And nobody was confident in this process based on the CCNR issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Wieske, did that answer your question?
That kind of answers my question. I'm a little dismayed at the fact that the applicant or applicant's representative would not have pushed this a little harder. That's quite, I mean, to bring us an answer tonight, that for an issue that you're bringing up, that you want to modify the condition or eliminate the condition, yet you don't have an answer from the attorney representing the home, the, the association. I'm a little dismayed at that. And, and if we put, if we condition it to put arrows on the ground, which are, are fine, then who's going to take care of removing the snow and the ice from those arrows in the wintertime? I'm going to assume that this is a level up from, and my question to the applicant, please, is, is this a step up from an urgent care and a step down from a typical ER? I mean, explain that to me a little better, please.
Sure. Alan Olive. So it, it is, as I explained earlier, it is a 24/7 operation. It is definitely a step up from an urgent care. It's another level of care that we're providing to the community. 24/7 ER, which can triage and take care of many and most of the emergent conditions. It has full imaging capability that can diagnose some of the ailments that are there as well as laboratory services. But it is not a trauma center. We don't put helicopters or, as Rems stated, they will not deliver with lights and sirens. So that is, that is the level of service. So it is, it provides a, a level of service, probably just slightly less than what a, a regular hospital ER would provide.
Okay. So then with that being said, and as you have stated, 95% plus or minus of the transportations to this type of a facility are in a residential vehicle, not a commercial vehicle.
That is correct.
So with that being said, as this shopping center continues to grow and build out in ways that we have no idea what could happen in the future, a person driving and, and injured person or a person needing medical attention may be a little frazzled getting that victim to your facility. Don't you think additional signage would be in their best interest to get there as quickly as possible?
So the challenge, in my understanding, and welcome to any of my, my colleagues to address as well, is signage is one thing, but then all the other applicant, all the other red, owners or operators of that, of those entities, what is their opinion? What is, what, you know, is Applebee's, I'm not sure at Applebee's, but any other entity say, well, I want directional signage. I want this. I don't agree with that sign that directs people to that entity. So the, the concern is, is the, the ability to make that so that we're not impacted or there's some untoward event related to signage that is not mandated by law or by, you know, by anything. It is a very visible center and it is different from a hospital. Hospitals are pretty big size and people need to know where that ER is. We don't have a hospital. It's the ER. And it, and it's got a big bright sign that's there as well as there'll be some monument signs that show that it's in that as well in the entry points.
Okay. And that, that, that was the next question I had, although you didn't show us a slide of, of monument signage. We haven't seen any signage here. We're looking at, at a, at a civil drawing right now with the building layout and parking. Where do you propose to have monument signage on this layout?
So the monument signs, I'd have to go back to a, another drawing. So this is one of the monument signs as you drive in. There'll be two of them that shows ER and it'll show that there is an ER there. And the location, whoops. Will be at the bottom, drive the, drive out the bottom.
You can point on the, you can point on the thing there.
Okay, thank you. This one here. And then correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it's?
It's at Mayan, right in the center.
Yeah, I'm there, at the Mayan.
Okay. So you have nothing on your property then as far as a monument sign?
Well, the, the sign is big and it's above the first door. It's actually a platform sign above the emergency room. So it's not ground level. It's actually above and it's bright and it says emergency. And it has an ambulance entrance and as well as an emergency walk-in entrance as well. So it's bright, lit in red. It's very bright. Not too bright. I understand. It's a balance.
See, my, my concern right now is with the picture that you have up there now, there's a dark area which is a pond during a lot of the year. That could be a building. That's a building pad there. It has a potential for, for being a building with parking behind.
Are you referring to the, the mud puddle area right here?
Yes, uh huh.
Actually, I think that is designed to be a parking lot, is it not? There's a?
I don't know. You're the one moving in here. I'm not.
Well, my understanding is there's a health club that's in this section here. And this is part of their parking lot.
Got it.
Planet Fitness. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Because it's?
And it's wide open.
That's what I'm trying to get to is what, what are you offering on your piece of property to help the, the guests, if you will, navigate to your facility?
So lots of things. One is, let's talk about the physical things. A big ER sign, bright, but not too bright. And it is above ground. It's a, a wall that's on top of the facility. The size is similar size as far as the lettering to Staples that's there. So it's very bright, not too bright. And then we have the wide open access. That will be parking, so it won't be a building that will obscure any visual. We'll also use social media as well as putting that in place for people to access care as well. These are some images of the front. If you look at down at the bottom, that, those ER lettering is quite large. Then we have the ambulance on the left and then the emergency walk-in entrance to the right. Again, lit 24/7, red lettering. And you can see the ER sign is on top of the facility and very, very visible from a long ways away.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
No more questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wieske. Commissioner Gower?
Mr. Chairman, if I could get back to my original question to Mr. Gilbert, I would appreciate that. Please?
Okay.
In your presentation regarding condition 11, you said that including that condition is contingent, staff's recommendation for approval is contingent on that recommendation in that condition. Is it as written now or is there room to modify it? You know, working with the applicant to see if we can get some signs in their pavement markings or is it pretty rigid?
Staff's preference would be to maintain as, as presented. If ultimately became an issue for CCNRs, it could certainly be revisited.
I can, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Bill Thomas, for the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager. I think the point you made, Commissioner Gower, is important in terms of the staff conclusion. The only thing I would add is that in my experience, it's been very difficult to implement conditions where one party is reliant on the other party who has no skin in the game or no reason to cooperate. So my suggestion would be that we add wording to that condition that says the applicant shall provide reasonable, reasonable best effort to perfect the condition to the satisfaction of the zoning administrator. And what I mean by that is if they simply come back and say, we asked, and they said, no, that's not going to suffice. They're going to have to demonstrate to us, what are the options, talking to the property owner, the shopping center owner. Because the way our code is written, shopping centers have a quantitative limit of what they can do absent CCNRs, even our own code. And it may very well be in order to achieve this condition, we're going to have to work with that shopping center owner to give them maybe a little more signage than they would have otherwise. Because if I were them, I'd be concerned about giving away my signage for the mud puddle or some other property. And that allows us then to be a third party in these conversations to achieve our end, which is to make this site accessible and visible for people trying to find it, while at the same time not getting the shopping center out of line with what we think the community would want to see for total signage on the shopping center.
If I could just add to that, that emergency room signage is specifically exempted in code. So the, I mean, it would already exceed the allowable number of monument signs, but there's a specific exemption in code for hospitals and emergency rooms to allow them increased size and, and numbers.
That might be something we can share with the shopping center. They, they might not be aware of that. They might be concerned just from the comments I heard about saying yes, what does that mean to them? So that's all I'm suggesting, is give us an opportunity to work with the applicant and the shopping center owner to see if we can achieve this. I think that would probably be the best way to remedy this right now. It doesn't sound like we're going to get pass in pass on just leaving it as is.
Commissioner Wieske, did you?
Thank you. Commissioner Gower, if you're done. I don't want to.
Sure.
Okay. Nathan, for you or for Bill, either one. If we modify the language to have the applicant and his staff meet with the association of the shopping center and then meet with, with you staff, and it's different than the, the result of those meetings are different than the condition if we leave it tonight. In other words, findings are made that the additional signage cannot be provided because it's on additional properties by property owners are not going to give up their rights to add a sign to it, whatever it may be. During construction over the next several months, because this project will not take two or three months to build, could the applicant at no cost to the city, to themselves, bring this back before us and request a modification to, to condition 11 at that time? Did I talk too long, Nate? Did I lose you? Yeah. It was a low flyer, okay? The, the question is, is we, we could, I could come up with some verbiage to number, to condition number 11 to state that over the next 90 days, the applicant and his staff work with the City of Reno staff to meet with the association owners to get approval of signage. If that approval is denied by the association, then, you know, it should be brought back to us to modify condition 11 to, or it could be brought back to us to modify, but allow the project to start moving forward.
I, hmm. I think yes. If it's written so that the first step would be the staff working with the applicant and the shopping center owner, HOA. And if we can't get that satisfactorily resolved, then we'd write the condition to return back to the planning commission for you to weigh in, I guess, on what the options are.
And, and the reason I'm saying that is Commissioners, is that at that point, I would at least entertain the idea of, of signage, visible signage laid out on the drive aisles instead of monument-style signs. At least it provides something that is reasonable to, if, if you've got property owners that absolutely say, I don't care whether there's exemptions or not, I don't want anybody else putting a, a sign on my property. And it allows, if the rest of this moves forward tonight, it allows for a reasonable consideration of condition number 11.
So again, staff's recommendation of approval would be contingent upon that. Now, if the, the concept, if I'm understanding correctly, would it be allow the facility to get started, possibly with a condition prior to certificate of occupancy or something to that effect, if that became an issue, would provide them time to return to the planning commission to revisit? Commission to revisit that condition?
Absolutely.
Okay. Yes, that, that makes sense.
Okay. Think about that verbiage, and I'll think about it, and we'll, hopefully, we're close together in a few minutes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Wysocki. Additional questions before we continue discussion? Okay. No further questions for the applicant or staff. Discussion items, I think we've had a good one about the traffic. I guess one thing that, having not asked any questions about it, so I'll weigh in. My question, and, and I appreciate this issue of, of working with, you know, the other owners in there, but one thing that Nathan said that struck me about this whole discussion is that, you know, emergency room signs are exempt from the signage requirements. And I think maybe another way of looking at it is that having the condition as it's written, which requires them to do it, is a little bit more of a, I guess, a hammer for this project and for the city. I don't know how that, how the other folks in the, in that department, in that shopping center would feel about that, but I think, you know, this is certainly something that I know staff feels is required, and I look at, you know, the findings that we have to make with respect to traffic impacts, and, you know, I agree that just putting some stripes on the parking lot paving is not going to, I think, satisfy what we're attempting to do here. So, I would be curious as to what the language is, but I'm actually in, in favor of leaving it as it is and letting it become perhaps something that is brought back in a more traditional manner, rather than going in and, and creating some language that sort of isolates this out as a 90-day exemption for this one condition on one project. I'm not familiar, in the time I've been here, where we've kind of specifically conditioned a project anticipating that that same condition is going to be coming back to us because something hasn't been worked out. So, I guess I'm throwing out there that, as it's written, it meets the intent of what we're trying to do. And if, for some reason, the applicant is not able to meet that, just like every other applicant that comes before us, if they can't meet it, we had one earlier tonight. It was requested, but it was a specific modification to a condition. So, I think we may be trying a little too hard to address and work around the fact that we, as a commission, have some concerns about traffic. The condition is written in a way that I think I'm comfortable meets the intent of what we're looking at, and any kind of watering it down, we're, you know, having them, basically giving them an out for somebody else. So, I'm not sure that I would be in favor of trying to work through that and not just leave it as it is, and perhaps let the, you know, let the chips fall where they may. As John said, he doesn't have an answer one way or the other, in terms of what they're going to be doing. So, I guess that's how I would weigh in on that part of the, the conversation. I would love to hear anybody else's comments on that. Commissioner Gower.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate those comments, and I agree with you, except for the point that, in this circumstance, we would be requiring them to do something that they don't necessarily have control over whether they can do it or not. And I think that's, that's the issue. It'd be great if they could do it all on their property, if they had control over the CCNRs for the whole property, fine, but if we're conditioning them to do something, then that puts them in the predicament, if the other parties, which they have every right to, say no, then where do you go? So I think that's where Commissioner Wysocki was going, and while I don't necessarily like putting a timetable and contingencies on things to come back to us, I'd rather have it, you know, spelled out right here. I think in this case, it's important enough, at least for me, that, to make the findings that we have something in there, that the, the signage is there, and every effort to get that signage is there, to meet those findings. So I'm, I'd be willing to entertain what Commissioner Wysocki has to say on that, because I don't want to put them in a situation where we're requesting them to do something that they can't fulfill.
Commissioner Olivas, I'll follow on to that, and I would add to it a little bit, that I'm not too high on a contingent condition, but I think that the more traditional method would require additional fees and preparation and, and other burdens upon the applicant that, that, given that we're dealing with a third party, excuse me, I, I think that I'd prefer the contingent condition, rather than, than force them to come back with a whole new application.
Thank you. Additional comments, Commissioner Marshall?
I'm with you, Mr. Chairman. I also, in part, get there by Commissioner Olivas' questions regarding due diligence. And this is a choice by this applicant to locate this facility at the back of a existing commercial center and provide a service that people need direction to. More than any particular restaurant, or discount tire shop, or anything else. It's an emergency room, they need to get there quickly. And, you know, I've, I've heard nothing that they can't do it. It's, what they've gotten is, from the attorney, I don't know. So, you know, I would be in favor of kind of a compromise between all these positions, and basically say, leave Condition 11 as it is, and somehow say, if you need to change it, and you, you run into a brick wall, come back, we're not going to charge you for it, but no time limits, just keep it the way it is, but to address your concern that, that it would be, you know, exempt from the application costs, and that we just move ahead with Condition 11 as written, with the additional waiver of future fees for amendment of that condition.
Mr. Chairman? Commissioner Wysocki?
Commissioner Wysocki.
I'm, as I was writing up some, some thoughts, I was thinking about a, a couple of different things. One is the duration of this job in respect to Chairman Johnson's comment about putting a timeframe on it. Commissioner Gower, you mentioned that also. You know, this is probably a 10, 11th month build-out, even though the pad exists. To, to get this overall project built out, just off the top of my head, that's more than enough time to respond to a condition similar to what Home Depot did. The difference between the two is, Home Depot was all, all on its own property. My employer had the opportunity back in the late 90s to do work in this shopping center, and I know that all the different pads out there are individually owned, even for the strip shop around the shopping center. There are some communal areas, but, you know, that was broken up. Ed Ricks was the original developer of this, and he had many different parcel lines out there, so there's many different property owners out there. And, and I can see where the restrictions would take place, I can see where meetings need to take place. Before I make any final comments about my, my position on Condition 11, may I ask another question of staff?
If it helps you get to the answers that you need for this discussion.
It does, and it may help the rest of you. Janelle, this is for, for traffic? Janelle, can, based upon traffic circulation and traffic patterns, how does, how does engineering look at monument signage and/or ground signage, pavement signage to, for this facility?
Janelle Thomas, Senior Civil Engineer, for the record. So, when we were presented with this application initially, there was some concern regarding the circulation of the site, and how people who were going to be utilizing this site in their private vehicles were going to navigate to the site. The, the parking lot, it tends to be a bit congested, and it, it is a circuitous route, as was described before, to get to the facility itself. I did work with Lauren Chilson to discuss those concerns, and with the proposed signage that was presented, that was a way that staff could make that finding, that the circulation was appropriate. Because, because of the nature of the facility, it's really important to have that, that monument signage, or that directional signage, to navigate people there in that emergent situation.
Thank you, Janelle. Which, that helps me get to where I want to go, or where I, I need to be. And if I may add, then, complete my comment, and this is to the applicant and, and your staff. I believe that Condition 11 is appropriately written for your facility and the people that are going to use it. I believe that you have enough time between now and the certificate of occupancy to meet with the shopping center association, and to work out any issues that, that may be present, and, and either get approval of some monument signage, as staff is requesting, or you have time to come back before us, before that certificate of occupancy, explain with staff's support why you can't make it, and then ask us for modifications to it, very similar to what Home Depot did. That, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, is where I personally stand on Condition 11 at this time.
Thank you, Commissioner Wysocki. One thing I want to mention, and Nathan is standing there, when we look at the specific text of Condition 11, and maybe there's just a simple wording change that, that Mr. Thomas can help us out with here, but it basically says that the placement of the signs, as generally illustrated in the Traffic Works memorandum, so obviously, we're looking at the, the intent there, and subject to the approval of community development staff. I guess my thought on that is, we've kind of, it's written enough that if there is an issue, if they come back, that they're already forced to bring it to the approval of community development staff. I would maybe recommend that, if there is an issue, and to address Commissioner Olivas' comments about the cost and everything, it seems to me that if there is an issue that is found with that, and it's brought back to community development staff, it can be raised up to the level of this commission as a amendment brought to us by staff, rather than the full application process for an amendment to this. And perhaps that might be a way to look at the timeframe issue of it, where they're going to have to be submitting on that with their building permit, or sooner. And then that could be a way that, you know, if they can't find it, or if one of them has to move, or we're requiring three signs, and one of them needs to be moved 100 feet, let's look at it from that standpoint. So I, I guess, I, again, I'm going back to the language here, that maybe there is some flexibility, as it's written, to allow for this to happen, and for additional disclosures to be developed with the, the additional property owners.
If maybe I can put that part to, to rest, I don't think we need wording. We'll just tell you and put it on the record that we'll allow them to return without filing a new application, just to bring the issue back. So, there's no need to add wording about the fees or a separate application, that's what we'll do.
And I'm pretty sure this commission has made its intent rather clear to the applicant.
Yeah. Commissioner Olivas, I have one comment, and I guess, if I'm putting myself in the applicant's seat right now, I was more for a contingent condition, but maybe something along the lines of what Mr. Thomas had said before about the reasonable efforts, because several comments have alluded to Home Depot, which we just denied their amendment. So, to build a building and have it be contingent upon something, and we're making the comparison to something that we just denied, that's not the best place for them to be. We did, we approved it, but we limited the drop-off portion of it that they were asking for. So, I would be a little concerned about taking the 11 months to build a building and have to come back, and, so, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out there, too, is that, that would be a concern, that we should build in the mechanism now, rather than letting them go to construction.
Okay. Commissioner Marshall?
Would you be willing to entertain a motion?
Seeing nobody jumping up with additional discussion items, I think we can get that process started.
In the matter of LDC 18-00100, Northern Nevada Medical Center, McCarran Northwest Fed. Based upon compliance with applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions as outlined in the staff report, including the additional condition that no patient transport shall occur via ambulance, operating emergency lights or sirens. And I make that motion based on Assistant City Manager representation that any need to amend Condition 11 will be brought back as a staff-level amendment.
Okay. I have a motion. Do I have a second or a discussion? Commissioner Hawkins?
I'm, I can meet all the findings, and I'll second that motion.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Wysocki?
May I ask a question of Commissioner Marshall?
You may, since he made the motion.
Your added verbiage for transportation with lights and sirens, is that limited to the shopping center, or is that within a mile, or three miles, or seven miles?
I, I think it's limited to the shopping center, if you want to put a geographic component to it, I have no problem with that. I think that's, it's McCarran, it's not, you know, I think McCarran's too far away. Whatever happens on McCarran stays in McCarran? No.
Wrong ci, wrong county, wrong city.
So, this would be maybe within the, within the, I don't like calling it a neighborhood, but within the, what do we call this? Shopping development? Within the shopping center.
Within, I, I, I would agree with you for verbiage on the shopping center, but I would like to have it clarified before the vote.
Yes, I would add with just the phrase, or the clause, "within the shopping center," or "within the canyon center," "in the canyon shopping center." Whatever the appropriate title is, staff can figure that out.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Is there additional discussion?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Gower, to Commissioner Marshall's added condition, I would hope that, I can, I can meet the findings, but I would hope that an ambulance in a situation, if it's in that shopping center and it needs to get around something, that it uses its lights and sirens to do so, to get a patient to the facility. And I don't agree with that condition, but I can make the findings otherwise. If I'm in that ambulance, I want that ambulance getting to its facility as quickly as possible, no matter what it takes.
I, I think then, if I may respond, I think then, it raises the question of whether or not this is not a life-saving trauma-level facility. So, I mean, what we're trying to do is balance findings with neighborhood adjacency of a business moving in, and Remza's already said, they don't deliver patients here with lights and, and sirens. So for me, it's critical to make that adjacency finding. At the same time, though, if there is some, you know, what I've heard emergency vehicles do is blip their lights or their sirens, I don't, you know, that to me is, is an operational deal that.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something? And I hope to do this in a Reader's Digest version. Couple of months ago, I had the unfortunate pleasure of using a facility like this, with a fellow cyclist who went down. He refused, because of a minor head injury that the onsite paramedics didn't know had taken place, he refused transportation through an ambulance, and since we were together, he asked me to take him to the ER that we, we were told about around the corner. And I took him there, come to find out, after four days in the hospital and two surgeries, that he should have been transported, not only from the site, but he should have been transported from this type of an ER facility to the trauma center, because he had major broken bones in his right shoulder, his back, and his ribs, and he had several other injuries that were causing internal bleeding that nobody picked up on. Of course, me, I'm not a doctor, I don't know, I just drove. Of course, me, I'm not a doctor, I don't know, I just drove. At that point, if he needed to get to the trauma center quickly, from this type of an ER facility, at least the ambulance driver, without the, the condition that you have just stated, Commissioner Marshall, would have had the opportunity to turn his lights on, to get out of a congested parking lot, and to get on the street and get to the trauma center. I can see it both ways, is what I'm saying. I understand what we're trying to do, and maybe, maybe to modify your condition to allow lights but no sirens, because what we've heard from the neighbors is noise. The noise travels via the, the wind, it travels up the canyon, they're worried about the sound, it's not the lights. Maybe that's a consideration for your modified condition. I just, thank you for letting me share that.
Thank you, Mr. Wieske.
Commissioner Olivas, and I would kind of add on to that, too. I think I can rely on REMSA's protocol and, and not have a need for that condition, because in the extreme unusual circumstance where they need it, or to get through that traffic, I think that it's already dramatically minimized the noise to the neighbors, and, and there's probably a similar likelihood of an ambulance in the neighborhood itself. So I think that it's been mitigated just by the protocol, and I don't need the condition.
Commissioner Johnson, I guess one of the questions that I have about this is that the condition that's there is being placed upon essentially a third-party person that's coming to the site. We've just had a discussion about the difficulties with working on the very same property to put a sign, because there's owners that they have no control over, and then we would turn around and put a condition on them for the vehicles that are being brought to the site that are operated not by this entity. I've heard tonight from REMSA that they would be traveling to this facility without lights and sirens because of the, the type of facility that it is, and I've also heard from the applicant and verification from staff that the number of vehicles, emergency vehicles coming to this would be limited to two to three per day. So I think the likelihood of a situation that Commissioner Gower has mentioned, perhaps during a five o'clock rush at the Flowing Tide or something where they're trying to get in there, having the ability to hit that horn really quickly to get some of those patrons out of the way, I think is appropriate. I certainly understand the concerns from the, the folks that are adjacent to that, and I think Commissioner Wieske mentions that lights are, are there. I trust the REMSA drivers to know the neighborhood, so based on that, I'm not sure that adding that condition to this is something that may even be enforceable by the applicant that we're looking at, since they're not responsible for the ambulances that are coming to the site. So we will throw this back to you, you have made the motion. If you would like to amend the motion or let the motion, I will call for the vote one way or the other.
Here's my dilemma. Right, so I, I agree with everything you said, except there's nothing in the permit that requires that. And so the permit that we would be authorizing would be for an emergency room that could develop into something that currently they're saying it is not, and we're locating it right next to an existing neighborhood. So how do we, you know, other than say, well, okay, there are existing protocols, there's an existing level of what they're attempting to do here, you know, we have testimony on the record that says it's one or two times a day, and, you know, that's the experience of other similar types of facilities offering similar types of services. But I guess I'm worried about the lifetime of this facility. Is it something that is going to always be operated in that way? So I would lean, that's why I like to lean towards, no one's, if they say they're not going to do it, and, you know, I, but I definitely appreciate the need for flexibility to get people to the facility if there is obstructions or something like that. So that's where I'm waffling, I'm trying to keep my perfect record today. But what I'll do is I'll withdraw my motion, if it's okay with a second, or I don't know if I need the second to say anything, so I'll just withdraw my motion.
Okay. I don't think there's an issue with that. I guess we would just call for another motion, then.
With that, Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Wieske. In the case of LDC 18-00100, Northern Nevada Medical Center, McCarran Northwest FED, based upon compliance with the applicable findings, I move to approve the special use permit, subject to the conditions, and I can make all of the conditions as written.
Okay. I have a motion from Commissioner Wieske. Commissioner Hawkins?
Commissioner Hawkins, I second that motion. Make all the findings.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Regrettably, no.
Okay. I have a motion passing five votes to one with Commissioner Marshall in voting against. Motion carries, and then I will read into the record, as we do all the time, the appeal process. Any final action not including recommendations or failure to take action by the Planning Commission may be appealed to the Reno City Council by the applicant, the mayor, or a city council member, or any person who is aggrieved by the action or inaction. An appeal, together with fees, must be filed with the city clerk within 10 calendar days, starting on the day after written notice of this action is filed with the city clerk. And if the 10th calendar day falls on a weekend or a holiday when the clerk's office is not open, the appeal may be filed on the next business day. And I read the appeal process, and the room just clears out. Okay. With that, we will move on to item number seven, Truckee Meadows Regional Planning Liaison Report.
I have nothing, since the county's not given me anything yet, but we do have a meeting coming up in September. Thank you.
Excellent. Staff announcements.
For the record, Bill Thomas, Assistant City Manager, I'm going to skip eight, one, two, and three, because I don't have anything to provide on those. I can give you an update, though, on four items that were acted upon by the city council. The Pachetti Ranch application was approved at the second reading by the city council, as was the Tanamera Business Park rezoning. The council also approved the Panther Meadows zoning change? Every, I'm having a hard time with that word right. And then lastly, the Penning Estates subdivision, which was actually held over a couple of times on appeal, was ultimately approved by the city council. So I think you won't be hearing more on that one.
Can I? I've been obviously getting inundated with emails regarding ADUs, and I'm sorry I haven't been present for the last one or two commission meetings, or planning commission meetings, so I don't, when is that, is that scheduled for any time coming back? Is that?
I believe it's going to be coming back in September.
As soon as we know, so I could plan my next vacation.
Yes.
It's tentatively scheduled for September.
Tentatively in September.
I think the second meeting?
Thank you.
I think, I'm not positive, though.
I have one question for Bill. What about the Etcheverria property? They were supposed to, I, I heard word that the county has relinquished their part of the control on that project?
Yes, I actually sat through, I think, that hearing. I believe the, the joint meeting between the city council and the county commission, they did approve the Etcheverria request, and the county did remove it. County commission voted to remove it from the joint plan.
Thanks.
Okay, thank you. Item number nine, Commissioner's Suggestions for Future Agenda Items. Seeing none, move on to item 10, Public Comment. This item is for either public comment on any action item or for any general public comment. Michelle, any requests to speak, forums?
No.
Seeing nobody rushing the podium, we'll close public comment, bring it back to item 11. Motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Good night. Thank you.